I got four questions. Yes, we are.
Today?
Well, I don't know. What's the...
I wonder what's...
Yeah.
I think you have to download it.
I do.
Oh, and then just put your fingers on it. Would you touch the screen? Just touch the screen. Yeah. Yeah.
Should we get started? Should we get started? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All righty, welcome to our November 1st, 2022 people-based city council meeting. You're relieved, you call the role peace. Right, we have Councilor Benfield here, Councilor Watson, Councilor Rex here, Councilor King here, Mayor Short, yes, here, Councilor Grant,
Aye.
and Councilor Prong here. All righty, thank you. All righty. We have minutes for May 20th of '22, July 5th of '22, and July 11th of '22. Does everyone have a chance to read them? All righty. They seem to be... Is there a motion to accept the as presented? Move to the committee, is there an answer?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to the one and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
I've got a question. Minutes for July 5th, Section 10, it mentioned 10 on the right. I don't know if we've got a last name for him.
Oh, okay.
But it's just a way I think that would be nice to have it in the record.
Oh, okay. What page was that on?
Well, it's Section 10.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what page it is. I can look at that.
Oh, okay. We'll look for it.
Yeah. It's July the 5th.
Okay. I love that reference.
Okay, that would be...
Page four. Page four. Page four, that's right. Thank you. Are there any corrections or revisions for the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Accounts payable, we had accounts payable. I went over the invoices, and it looked really to be complete. Are there any questions on accounts payables? Could speak. Is there a motion to accept accounts payable as presented?
I can make the objection as presented.
All righty, is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept our accounts payables as presented. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of accepting the accounts payables as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pardon me. Councilor Prong, did I hear you? Did she say aye?
One, okay.
She's concentrating. Are there any public comments this evening? Sir?
This is it?
Yes, is it?
Well, I...
We gotta come up with...
Come on up there, sir. And just sign in.
I'm not sure that I'm ready to have a comment yet. I was going to listen about the hearing first, and then hopefully I have the right to come back and make a comment after.
Okay, well, that's part of the hearing process.
Okay.
So...
That's it.
You can just wait till the hearing, John.
Yeah. All righty. So there are no other public comments this evening? Okay, well, moving on to the public hearings. We have an appeal of a planning commission decision. This is an appeal of planning commission decision on application for building permit to convert 670 square feet of retail space from retail use to coffee shop retail use, case file number three dash C1 dash PC dash 22. Before addressing the public appeals hearing on tonight's agenda, the council is asked to consider the applicant's request for a 30-day time extension. The basis for this request is contained in an email to the city planner on October 24th of '22, which reads as follows. On behalf of Gracie Sehag, I request a 30-day time extension on our appeal of a change of use of the Bigfoot building. This request is based on the fact that we didn't have access to the minutes of the meeting of the planning commission until October 18th, when they were sent out by the city planner after being approved by the planning commissioner. These minutes reveal important insights of the commission during their deliberations, as well as other potential reasons for the appeal that were not available to us when we filed our original appeal. Thanks for your consideration to vote Jerome Grant. So at this time, I'm going to open discussion between council as to whether they want to proceed with the 30-day appeal, the live request. You have a point of order? Yes, before we do that, should there be calls for expectee contact or conflict of interest? Or does I have a deal where... Yes. That happens later? Yeah. Well, I'm confused because what I just heard was on behalf of Gracie Sehag, and the appeal was filed on the basis of Jerome Grant. And Gracie Sehag didn't file an appeal.
I was just going to say the appeal request they made was from the business academy Gracie Sehag.
Is that relevant to who files the appeal they for?
Um, no.
He filed it. Just because he calls it as Sehag doesn't change the fact that he filed the appeal. It was his fault. I know. Because from... Maybe I didn't understand what just was asked of us tonight. Gracie Sehag was asking for a 30-day delay. Councilor Graham is asking for a 30-day extension to prepare for the hearing. So that's what you're looking at deciding on at this particular point, if you're going to allow a 30-day extension. If you choose not to allow a 30-day extension and continue with the hearing, that's what we'll do tonight. Otherwise, it will continue until the next meeting, which is December, what did you say?
Oh, December 6th, yeah.
So, which is within the particular appeal time.
I have a question. So you're saying that it's the same entity, pretty much? Jerome Grant and Sehag is the same in this particular case? Is that correct?
As my understanding.
As far as what's the discussion?
I know. You're in the position, you can't really say anything about that.
Well, Your Honor, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions. When I filed the appeal, I had questions. I'm an officer and managing director of the Sehag. So I asked, as you both remember, I asked how to file the appeal on behalf of the Sehag, and that's the way I did it. And I signed with the Sehag.
Okay, so that's what he did. He filled out a form based on... I don't have it inside me. Do you have it, Chris?
The appeal form is in the... Is it a check? The appeal form was signed by Mr. Graham, but do you guys have a call? The check was drawn on Gracie Sehag.
The problem I'm having is it says, "On behalf of Gracie Sehag, I ask for a 30-day extension." Correct, and signed it as Jerome Grant. Well, may I ask, Councilor Rex, what's the concern?
Well, it just said it's a matter of law, I guess. Who filed the appeal and who's asking for the extension? But beyond that, what is being appealed is the decision of the planning commission.
Correct.
And that's in the record. And the... I just don't see a need for a 30-day extension when the applicant is here and the appellant is here.
Well, that's what you will be deciding at this point, is whether or not to grant the 30-day extension. If you choose to grant it, you would be in motion to approve the 30-day extension. If you choose to grant it, then the hearing, then nothing gets discussed tonight. I'm sorry for that, that that would be the way that would work. If you say, no, we want to have the hearing, which is within your purview, you would deny, you would motion to deny the extension, and the hearing would continue. You have to deal with the request for the extension before you do anything else.
All right, I'll just add, that's not to say also that if the council decided to conduct the public hearing this evening on this matter, you could still have the opportunity to, based on testimony that's presented this evening by the applicant, the appellant, other interested parties, if the council's desire was to continue the matter, because there was a decision that's for giving that the council took everything you're traditional information to expectation, you would still have the ability to do that.
I move that we deny the 30-day extension on these applications. It's been moved to deny the time extension request. Is there a second to the motion?
All seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the request for a 30-day extension. Is there a further motion, discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we will go ahead with the appeal today. Okay, tonight is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. At 7:00 PM, the city council set for a public hearing is better than appeal of the planning commission decision on building permit for a change of use to allow a 673 square foot portion of an existing building to be changed from retail to eating-drinking establishment in the retail commercial C1 zone. Case file number three dash C1 dash PC dash 22. The applicant is Katrina Patterson for the Beach House. The appeal of the planning commission decision to approve the application was filed in a timely manner for the force 2022 by Jerome Grant slash Gracie Sehag, the applicant. The applicable relevant criteria for which this case will be decided are people-based zoning ordinance section 152.030, retail commercial zone C dash 1, section 152.031, commercial zone C dash 1, design standards and guidelines, and section 152.058, off-street parking and off-street loading requirements. All testimony or evidence presented toward the appeal being heard must be at record for the relevant criteria contained in the people-based zoning ordinance to other city plans or policies or to other criteria which a person believes pertains to the request. All persons shall be raised issues with sufficient clarity so as to allow the city council or others an adequate opportunity to respond to or resolve the issue. Failure to address a criterion before the close of the hearing record precludes an appeal to the land use or appeals based on that criteria. Failure by the appellant no later than the close of the hearing record to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with specific sufficiency to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude in action for damages based on those issues in the survey. Prior to the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the appeal. If a participant requests such an opportunity prior to the case, the close of the evidentiary record, the city council may ether continue the hearing for at least seven days or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow the submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. Seven days is then allowed for response to the new evidence, arguments, or testimony, and seven days shall be allowed for rebuttal or as 197.763. Right to an appeal. An appeal for an affirmative action or ruling by the city council may be filed with the land use board of appeals within 21 days after the date of the city council's decision is reduced to writing and bears the necessary signatures, is mailed or otherwise submitted to parties entitled to notice according to ordering law. The appeal will need to comply with a LUPA according to ordering law. The appeal should be contacted for information regarding an appeal. In order to have standing for an appeal, at first, there must have been mailed written orders participated in writing to the person at the planning commission public hearing or the city council public hearing or have been substantiated by the action or ruling. While in presentation of the city planner's report, record, and proceedings and decisions of the planning commission, the appellant may present information regarding the appeal. Then proponents, those agreeing with the appeal are heard, followed by opponents, those objecting to the appeal. And other interested parties are either for or against the appeal. Finally, the appellant may speak in rebuttal of any testimony presented in opposition. Those providing testimony are asked to state their name and address for the record and provide name and mailing address on the signed sheet. Council members will have the opportunity to ask questions or clarification after each testimony. Are there any council members declaration of conflict of interest, expertise, contact, or bias?
Ask you.
Oh, me? No, I haven't contacted anybody.
You are a conflict of interest.
Oh, I'm, yeah, definitely, without doubt.
Is there any... Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone present in opposition to any member of the city council to hear this case? At this time, I'd ask our city planner, Kit Fox, to go over his staff report for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you've discussed already previously, the planning commission's decision approving the building permit in this case was billed timely on October 4th. Staff provided the city council with copies of the findings conclusions and final order the following day, on October 5th, 2022. And the approved planning commission minutes will forward to decision on October 18th, 2022. Public notices will be sent to surrounding property owners and interested parties on October 12th, and will publish to the important times on October 14th. On October 19th, the applicant submitted a memorandum opposing the appeal, which is in your staff report this evening. And also, as discussed earlier this evening, there was a request on October 24th from the appellant for a 30-day time extension of the public hearing. There are generally four bases for the appeal that are articulated in the form that was sent and supplemental information that was submitted by the appellant. Let's go through that. The first is that proposed parking is inadequate to meet city requirements. The appellant states that the proposed parking facilities are inadequate to meet requirements. He also finds that the area diagram is inadequate to minimum acceptable requirements for parking. The planning commission found that substantial evidence in the records demonstrated that the site is suitable for the proposed change of use, that the change of use is consistent with the now entered step four in the people-based zoning ordinance, including those related to off-street parking. The applicant provided a project site plan depicting the configurations and dimensions of the proposed off-street parking facility. So we provided, you're receiving an 11 by 17 copy of that site plan that's a little easier to read. And it should be the second page of the floor, which the site plan that includes the dimensions that demonstrates that the parking spaces and drive aisles meet city requirements. So again, in summary, the site plan demonstrates that 15 parking spaces could be provided that match the use of the amount of materials city requires, but a 12-foot wide one-way drive aisle through the site could be provided, and that a 24-foot wide drive aisle is provided in the area that requires meeting spaces 9 through 12 and space 15 to accommodate turning movement while parking in those spaces. As described in the findings conclusions in final order, 15 off-street spaces are required to meet the needs of the proposed change of use on the ground floor of the building and the three existing tourist accommodations on the second floor. The planning commission determined that by limiting the outdoor seating dining area to 220 square feet and allowing no indoor seating dining area except for limited amounts for customers waiting to take out orders, the city's parking requirements would be met. And therefore, staff believes that this basis for the appeal is without merit. The second point is that the applicant has not yet provided parking facilities to support the proposed use. The appellant notes that although we supplied a diagram of how they intend to require to create the required spaces to meet the change of use in the building, they have done nothing to implement the plan. Spaces remain unstrapped. Again, the planning commission made the necessary findings in its deliberations to approve the requested change of use, including consistency with the off-street parking requirements. It is not usual or customary to require applicants to make site improvements at any time until after the city's approval of a proposed land use application is final. At the time of the planning commission's action, the applicant did not yet have approval to make any of the necessary building alterations related to the proposed change of use. The findings conclusions in final order included a condition requiring the parking lot striping to be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So it was pretty sure to object to approval of the building permit on the basis of the parking lot that already been stripped. So for this reason, again, staff believes that this basis for the appeal is without merit. The third basis related to ODOT permits and traffic study approval as a requirement for the project. The appellant stated that a permit from ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, is needed for an access or approach to a state highway. Their request for a permit is to be submitted on an application for state highway approach form 734-2680. This rule also covers egress from commercial business into a state highway. I don't see a permit issued for this project involving State Highway 101. I also believe that ODOT will decide on a traffic study in order to, for them to approve this use. Again, as we've stated, the applicant, the planning commission, did make the necessary findings related to off-street parking adequacy as part of its deliberation. In retrospect, staff erred by not forwarding the building permit application to ODOT comments. At the time, staff had not realized that ODOT review was required for an existing driveway approach when there was a change of use. Staff has now better, has a better understanding of the thresholds for ODOT review so that this error will be avoided in the future. On October 5th, 2022, the day after the appeal was filed, staff contacted ODOT to determine whether a permit and/or traffic study would be required. ODOT responded the following day that a new state highway approach permit would be required, but a traffic study was not. The applicant subsequently submitted the necessary permit application to ODOT and currently under review pending the city's final action required to issue. Therefore, staff believes that while this basis for the appeal has some merit, it can or has merit, it can be addressed by imposing an additional condition requiring approval of the ODOT permit. And the fourth basis for the appeal had to do with public works review and approval of the project. The appellant questioned whether our city supervisor was asked about how this activity in our narrow street from a one-way driveway from commercial business would affect local traffic. Reference to the exiting from the site onto northeast Clark Street. Take care. There is no, there was no specific discussion in the planning commission's deliberations related to public works review. But there is also no specific zoning ordinance requiring the public works director to review or comment on building permit applications that are presented to the planning commission. However, again, on October 5th, staff asked the public works director to review the proposal and offer an opinion on the issues that were raised by the appellant. The director responded stating that the parking lot layout and the one-way exiting northeast Clark Street Clark Street looked fine. And he also noted that there was already no parking allowed along this section of northeast Clark Street, which would appear to eliminate the conflicts that might occur between vehicles exiting on the street in this area. And therefore, staff believes that this basis for the appeal does not have merit. In conclusion, staff believes that the basis of... In conclusion, staff believes that the basis of the appeal are generally without merit, and therefore, staff recommends that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's action, however, adding a condition, number five, in the staff report before this evening, that would require the applicant to obtain the necessary ODOT permit related to the change of use and the existing driveway approach from North Highway one oh one. That concludes staff's briefing session.
Thank you, Kit. Much appreciated. Alrighty. Mr. Greb. Mr. Greb, did you hear your testimony?
Well, yeah, I would like to start with the reason why I asked for an extension. And because that could be also a point for my appeal from ALUBA was when I filed the appeal, I didn't have access to minutes of the September fourteenth planning commission meeting, which had important deliberations there regarding the approval. And I don't know if you have this here, the minutes here, starting on page two. The planner starts a narrative about the proposed change of use and the details of the... But then, on page three, and I had no idea, I gave Kit my concern when I made the appeal that, hey, look at that under it, because especially going off one oh one and onto access and egress from, especially, well, any commercial or residential building that ODOT wants to be bought. But here on the September fourteenth meeting, that I now have this Kit Fox on line nine, page three, Kit Fox City Planner summarized his memorandum regarding the possible recodification of the transportation impact study regulation, and I don't have access to that TIS right now either, which would have had to do with the access or egress for this change of use, for the parking coming in and out of one lane or off into the other street. Discussion followed regarding, one, the planner's conversation with the city attorney and their recommendation to redo the administrative record to determine the city council's intent at the time when the ordinance was adopted. I'd like to know that myself. Two, because I don't have access to the city attorney's decision on that, and that could have influenced my wanting to continue this appeal or not. And so, two, minimum and maximum trip thresholds and determination of whether a TIS or transportation impact study letter or TIS report is required. And keep in mind, this is all on September fourteenth. The current language would not be, you know, all this is about the TIS. If the intent is for this requirement to be broadly applicable, it would be more appropriate to recodify the provisions as part of the supplemental regulations section through the depot base zoning ordinance text amendment, public hearing process. So this is not even decided yet, you know, on what the city's guidelines for establishing such, coming off of one oh one or establishing a change of use of business that requires more traffic coming and going from this particular building on Highway one oh one. Now, I mentioned in the appeal, and I'm no attorney, and that was that I didn't think the parking lot was adequate, and that was after driving through it several times to provide fifteen spaces. And actually, the... So I'm going to go to, on the original decision here, we'll go to page two. It has findings. The finding information finds requests, the applicant requests approval to convert six hundred and seventy-three square foot of portion of ground for existing two story building from a retail to eating drinking establishment, fine. And then you've got the floor plan here, second floor. The applicant would like to be able to utilize a portion of the front yard area outside of public right of way for seating dining purposes. Now, this, and that's fine, there are currently six off street parking spaces striped in the parking lot, but the proposed plan calls for striping of fifteen spaces. With a one way drive aisle entering, this is important, entering from North Highway one oh one and exiting at northeast Clark Street. Well... The parking, our parking permits. And they were citing in the decision, two portions of the commercial zone and parking ordinances. And the one first was the... The subsection of one five two dot zero five eight off street parking and off street loading requirements, and this will be for commercial, C one. And the first glaring thing that I didn't see in the parking plan was in item Q of that section. All parking lots shall be designed with spaces for handicapped drivers as provided for in the building code. I did not see a handicap space provided for in this parking lot, which according to our own zoning ordinance is required and in the building in this change of use. And again, that's from one five two dot zero five eight, item Q. But you know, there also is for the commercial zone, something parking requirements that proceeds, and actually, I'll read from one five two dot zero three one commercial zones, C one. Parking, titled in jet, parking, comma garages, comma and driveways in the C one zone, number one. Parking requirements within the C one zone shall conform to one five two dot zero five eight of this chapter. And I've already demonstrated that, at least at this juncture, that hasn't been done for the lack of the handicap space. But here, this is interesting. Parking requirements shall conform to the previous subsection that I just read. Parking, and then the second sentence, parking related provisions of this section shall supersede provisions of one five two dot zero five eight of this chapter that are expressly contrary to this section. And then it goes on to say, and I'm not completely convinced of this, I'd have to see the plaque, you know, and actual measurements and study in detail, but the required size of, the merit goes on, the required size of parking spaces, aisles, driveways, and similar design features are set forth in diagram below, which I didn't have access to. Due to the increased length of vehicles, longer parking spaces are highly recommended. No compact sized spaces are allowed, and I'm not sure if that was in the design of the parking or not. But more important, we'll continue here. In one five two dot zero three one, commercial zone, C dash one, J, item three A says this. All off street paved vehicle areas along arterial of Highway one oh one, including surface lots, driveways, parking areas, and garages shall be accessed from alleys or aside or backstreet and shall be located in areas behind or to the side of a building. The design of this parking lot is allowing access in one way from Highway one oh one, directly contrary to this number three of the zoning ordinance. And then another assignment there on the design of the parking, going down to the subsection and of the same superseding zoning ordinance for C one, one five two dot zero three one. Item three D, parking areas on the side of a building, okay, shall be limited to one row of diagonal parking maximum. Well, this design allows parking on two sides of the aisle there, not one row of diagonal parking. And that is detailed in the commercial C one section. And finally, by the applicant's own calculation, he or they say that they really are requiring sixteen spaces. And... But they've made a compromise, I guess, with the planning commission to give a variance, which is not allowed in these zoning ordinances here at all by the planning commission. If somebody wants a variance for a, to relieve themselves of one parking space, there's a process for that. And it's decided in this body here by this group, not by the planning commission. They can maybe decide and give guidance for the requirements for variance, and this will document it. But the planning commission does not have the authority to grant a variance of parking. And in this case, they did with a compromise that's never, that's not detailed in any allowance at all that I can find in the zoning laws. So, let's see. So I'm summing up, I get those assignments up there. The design of the parking lot, it may be able to be redesigned, but it lacks, right now, it lacks a handicap space, which are, you have to have an offloading area from a handicap spot. And I don't know that the lot could be rethought and redesigned to be adequate for the change of use, but it's not right now, and the ordinances are clear on this. And the access from a one way lot from Highway one oh one, and, you know, it looks to me from the superseding zoning ordinance on commercial buildings here for parking, that you can't do that. That you want, that the proper way to do it would be to have access to egress off of, was it Clark Street, right there, instead of going one way off of one oh one through the parking lot now. It actually prohibits. If, in item three, parking, all off street, shall be, item three A, shall be accessed from alleys or side of street, side or backstreet, and shall be located in areas located behind or to the side of the building, which Clark Street is. And so, that, that really, those errors in the design and the approval are what, you know, concerns me. I think that it could maybe be able to be remedied, but not with the current decision to allow this to go forward, especially, I mean, they're learning. And then, again, I don't have access to this, to the transportation impact study requirements, and I don't even know if, I'm guessing the attorney has not got back to the planner what that is, but maybe he has, and I just don't have access to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'll take a seat in the audience. Do you have, do we ask questions now? No, we're taking testimony right now. Is there someone for the proponents of the testimony for the proponents and approval? No one's testifying in approval? Okay. Is there opponents? Need a couple more chairs there?
I'll just kind of introduce people and then I'll see.
You need to sign in and sit down and speak into the microphone for me? Thank you.
Evening, my name is Doug Holbrook. I'm an attorney representing the...
Oh, no, so, you know?
Yeah.
I need your names and...
My name is Katrina Patterson.
I'm Jeremy Castle. I think as far as the documents are concerned, I have a big speech house.
Okay.
I'm not an attorney, I don't know how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well... I know that Jeremy had a statement that he wanted to sort of read and give you some background to the project and what they're trying to do. Why don't you get, sit to your next, you gotta pick your phone up.
I'd like to start by thanking the council for your time and allowing us to speak today. My name is Jeremy Castle, my wife is Katrina, our son is Doug Holbrook. We're very proud members of the community, live a few miles down the road, we raise our kids and look forward to being here for many years to come. For about four years now, we've been operating a small, but semi-successful business here in Deco Bay on the Strip. Spending our days working in the store on the Strip, speaking with both residents and visitors. We've been made very aware that there's a few amenities, particularly on our end of the Strip, which is the north end, that are lacking, and it makes it difficult for visitors to occupy and enjoy the area as they would like. First and foremost, very few, none of the businesses on this end of the Strip have a customer accessible restroom, and there's no available facilities at all for disabled individuals. In addition, leases at Larisa Plaza on this end of the Strip come with restrictions on sale of any food or beverages. So essentially, when someone comes into our business and needs a bottle of water or they need to use the restroom, we have no choice but to tell them they need to get back in a car, and they've got to go a long distance, or they have to run to the other end of the Strip real quickly to take care of their needs. We always try to keep a positive relationship with everyone in the community, and when this new space, which is now hopefully being called the Speech House, became available, we were lucky enough, we wanted to first notify. We were then fortunate that the building owner, property owner, Mr. Lynch, right here, was excited to sign a lease and see the improvements made to both the building and the community. This building is a space to build a brand new handicap accessible restroom with proper diaper changing facilities and a wide double door storefront. I guess that's always under my, I put around one of those double store door things, so that's top of my list. Unlike a restaurant facility where you typically have to purchase something, use restroom, we plan to make this restroom facility available to everyone, to the general public. We've been holding lease for about a year and a half now. As hurls have continued to be presented by more public organizations than we ever thought existed, we've been extremely patient and thoroughly accommodating the wishes of every agency that's made requests, and we understand that most of these requests are through... And we understand that most of these requests are to ensure the proper health and safety of the public, which we can all appreciate. The latest attempts to delay and prevent the opening of our business by City Council Representative Jerome Grant, owner of the businesses on the other end of the strip, we found much less reasonable. Of course, he raised his initial repeal. He's asked for another appeal. We find that there's a lot of, we feel like we're being bullied a little bit, honestly, by this individual. We feel like there's a serious conflict of interest and Mr. Fox has been very, very helpful in trying to provide us with the information and resources that we may jump through all of those that are presented to us. We feel that some of his requests are pretty absurd. Man, I can't even think of them all right now because I haven't been seeing or taking notes. One thing that's top of my mind is the variance that he said we received. We don't have variance of any kind. We were told that we needed more spaces then we would have to make our restaurant, so we sacrificed square footage. That's why Mr. Fox very clearly said that they're allowed this many square feet of seeing outside and no seeing inside. Our original plan required or required more spaces and we were able to get a hold of here. So we've made a lot of sacrifices to accommodate the rules as far as the planning commission and our architects going back and forth have determined is appropriate. The handicap space, granted, I'm not the architect, but it seems like they were in communication. I'm pretty sure there's a handicap space on there. Although I don't have it in front of me, you guys do. And the one-way thing was just approved by ODOT, the city attorney, the city planner, everybody. It seems like the perfect solution and there will be, as he very clearly stated, he's going straight to the land use board of appeals, there will be no end to Mr. Grant's appeals and trying to prevent us from all things business. I think it's not how a council person should necessarily be behaving in trying to ensure that they have a monopoly on these services and goods in the area. I think it's bad for the growth of Deco Bay and we're good people. They're just trying to raise a family here. And we should be dealing with reasonable appeals and reasonable questions. And we're happy to accommodate them, of course. I hope I have much more. Would you like to speak?
Thank you very much.
So the appellant expanded significantly over what he submitted in writing, as she all can tell. So if you are, if you find something that needs further addressing or if you're taking some of these things under advisement, we would ask for additional time to brief that. But with respect to the issues that he raised, I think the planner has very clearly and adequately addressed them. None of them in his written statement even come close to addressing most of the planning standards that you have to and that the planning commission had to judge the plan by. So the handicap space, as he pointed out, is only if the building code requires. There may be one on the plan. I wasn't quite a big one, so I haven't seen it. The access off of 101, I don't know. I haven't seen that ordinance or that part of your code. I don't know that if it really states what he is representing. It seems like it would be a little strange to me, given the number of businesses in Deco Bay that do access directly off of the highway. Again, if that's an issue that you're going to want to take up, then that's an issue that I would like an opportunity to get back to. I think the parking spaces have been how that happened and why that meets your code has been adequately addressed by the planner and also Mr. Castle's statement about what happened at the time. And you know, the number of spaces is based upon the square footage of your operation. So they cut down the square footage, they cut down no seating and, you know, so you need fewer parking spaces. Anyway, I think you should just deny the appeal and let this go forward. Again, if you're going to want to consider his access issue in particular, then I would like now to address that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to add that if there are any more concerns, I mean, we would love the afternoon to make sure our faculty can just address it very quickly. We will do that as soon as possible. Obviously, he's more into know on a code than I will ever be. So yeah, any guys want to, we'll jump through whatever we've seen.
Yeah, and they don't have any issue with adding the conditions if they get the ODOT access permit. That's all. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lynch, have you?
Yes, come on up, Mr. Lynch.
Well, my name is John Lynch.
Do you want to sign in for us there?
I will sign in there.
Thank you.
I moved to Deco Bay in 1973. I was around when all the black and white mirrors were up there in color. I occupied this particular building in 2001 and purchased it in 2005 and have been a part of it since. There is very little land that's available behind these commercial strips for parking. We have an amazing opportunity with amazing parking, which is very rare, as you guys know that. The access that we, that's come up towards discussion with ODOT has been there since 1938, when that was a mobile station originally. Then went from a mobile station to a women's store. Then in 1986, the people who owned it added a little 674-square commercial section in the apartment above. And then it was a combination of a lingerie place and then it was a chamber office and then it was real estate office and then I added a real estate office. And then we had a gardening shop there. I mean, we've transformed to many, many different uses of that. And then we built two units on top, which caused the applicant, or the, well, the applicant, not the appellant, to pause while we finished the construction. So it was a health and safety hazard to have an operational building there. The tenant that we had before was Converge. She would have been there forever. She had a wonderful women's clothing shop, but the pandemic shut her down. She bought all of her stuff in the winter for spring and summer and then she had to be closed and she had to drop business. So but during this period of time, we have something that happens that's pretty unique right there. We have UPS, we have FedEx and we have all these major trucks that come through there that serve that whole strip. They come in through that particular access. They always go in and out the Clark Street access. In fact, I've never seen anybody in all the years that I've owned it try to go the opposite direction. Regardless, when we get this, if we get this approved, then we will go ahead and stripe it appropriately. We haven't striped it ahead of time because we don't know if there's going to be changes. But we will adhere to the plan that's there and we will put a directional one-way in. It's not, in my opinion, not feasible to even consider diagonal parking. Here's your diagonal parking going against that building. It would cause you to back out into the, basically the street or the access portion of it. And the way it's set up now, you can just pull forward and not interfere with anybody coming into that particular parking lot. The, to have two-way access off of Clark Street, in my opinion, but I think if you look at it, would be extremely dangerous, especially for big trucks coming in and out and trying to turn around and go back out. So I think the parking plan actually was a great compromise and well-designed. If there's not a handicap parking space on there, that's a really huge fix. But I would encourage you to really decline the appeal. And what we have, with the exception that we get an ODOT permit, if it's required, we will lay out the parking as the plan, we'll put directional arrows and for sure we'll have a free handicap parking space on. You have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Are there any other parties interested in testifying in C1? Yes.
My name is Rebecca Haslam and my husband and I own Left Coast Coffee in Deco Bay. I have known Katrina and Jeremy since they had Coastal Curators. And we opened our business, I would say it's four and a half years now. And just some of the points that they were just making about the UPS deliveries and the FedEx deliveries. And I used to shop at Converge regularly and religiously and I've never experienced a traffic issue pulling in and out of there. I would love to see us somehow as a city be able to put in the blinking lights that people as pedestrians could signify that they're about to cross at that crosswalk because I see that happen, but I feel like there is Mr. Nice Guy, there is another coffee shop. I own a coffee shop. I feel like Deco Bay is an amazing place for people to come and visit and they have amazing experiences. And I feel like there's enough commerce to accommodate everyone. Whether we have like, I didn't know that they were thinking of coffee, but I'm like happy to have another place to send people to get coffee or to get something that I don't offer. And I feel like it's, I was very surprised that there was an objection on another, particularly I felt like, first of all, it was a big conflict of interest for another businessperson to have an opinion on another business and them being able to open. But furthermore, I feel like we should be encouraging each other to bring more to Deco Bay because it's an amazing place. Worldmark brings people from all over the world, all over the country, and they're excited to be here and they're excited to discover things. And the other part what they had added about the restroom, I tell every, I mean, I can't tell you how many times a day I've had a customer come through my door dancing around. I mean, where's the nearest restroom? It's a block and a half south between the Purple Star Fish and Blood Works. Like it's a, it's a staying in our shop that people to direct. So to have something on this end of town that would be accessible for people that come to visit would be a wonderful addition. And I just don't see how it would be a traffic conflict. I can't imagine that they are going to be hip-hopming and that busy that anything more than coming out of the center market causes 101 off and on. Although it is off and on of 101, I've seen, like I said, we've had a business for over four years and I've watched people pull into Converge, come up, come down, hang the right onto 101, which honestly is safer a lot of times than trying to back onto 101 when no, unless you have a backup camera to be able to back on and pull out, so. All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Pardon me, I have a question. Get all done with President?
Yes.
Check on one. There are four people on one, so we might have to move on.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you. Hi. My name is Eric Haller.
Yes.
My name is Terry Lippert. I'm here with my husband Jeff and I have lived here in Deco Bay for 12 years. And I think about three years ago, I started working for Katrina at Coastal Curators. So really, I'm here to let you guys know what kind of a business owner and employer Katrina is. And I have to say, she's one of the most put-together people that I've worked for. And I've worked in IT and finance. I've worked with some put-together people. I'm also a terrible host. I have to speak for myself. So, and I'm going to back that up in that her, her rates, what she pays her employees are, I would, I would consider a living wage, especially for retail. And she does this not only because she wants to retain her employees, but she knows that everyone that she employs, from a homeschool mom, myself, to the wife of a postcard, to a wife of a police officer, to retired, looking for part-time jobs, she will not only want to retain them, but she wants them to be able to, I, if you work in retail, be rewarded for some of that, especially after COVID, be rewarded for what it's like to work in the service industry and to represent her as a happy employee. She, her wages are fair, her hours are fair, she savvy as far as, she does open a little bit earlier, so she provides the one store for the shopping experience for those early shoppers that are there at 10 o'clock in the morning where no other store is open. Or maybe a little bit later, when all the shops close at 5, she opens until 6 for a shopping experience. She has many repeat customers, many positive comments and feedback on the ambiance of her store. I've been telling customers for years, I can't wait for you guys to see Bigfoot Beach House. I can't wait for you to go and have that shopping experience because she brings amazing product. I can't say enough about this woman. As a Deco Bay resident, I would like to say, I, it hurts me to see that that shop has been unoccupied for two years. And really for us to impede, not only for just the look of it, the appearance of, there's, all of you probably know, a lot of the people that come to visit Deco Bay are here year after year, multiple times a year. Why isn't it open? Why isn't that shop open? Isn't there something anybody can do? I don't think it looks good for us as a community as a whole to keep storefronts closed and not, not being utilized. Not only that, it's the employment opportunity for people like myself or a postcard wife, et cetera, for people to get a part-time job that they love. And I, I think that's it. I'm going to think of 10 more things as I walk back to my seat, but I'm pretty sure that's it.
Thank you for coming forward.
Of course. Thank you guys for listening to me.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak to the appeal? Okay. I think we'll take questions at this time. If anyone has questions for any of the.
Do I hear a rebuttal?
I was gonna say, I think. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I know these things sometimes turn into personality problems, so yeah. But I'm not here for that. In this country, we have laws. And those laws are meant to be a standard for, for everybody. And it's also up to this, this chamber, this body of decision-makers to change those laws if necessary. And they can, and you as counselors and the mayor can do that. And so, you know, I, I, I actually, you know, the reason why I wanted the time, I can tell you this, and then Mr. Castle, I don't know these people, and I wish them all well. They don't know me, okay? They only, I guess they think they do, but I'm not going to make this personal, okay? I'm, I'm sure if Mr. Castle got to know me, he might like me. But that being said, um, so going forward is that, the reason why I wanted to stay, actually, I may have changed my mind and dropped the appeal after I, after I looked into the, uh, the transportation, uh, plan. But I didn't get that chance, and so I presented the appeal with absolutely appealable points in our zoning ordinance. Their attorney didn't have an answer for it. He hasn't looked at it. I'd be, I'd be happy to lend him my coffee so he can study it right now, but he doesn't. He doesn't have an answer for my, my points on the parking lot as designed right now, as is, is inadequate. That's not to say that it couldn't be redesigned. This is not a, uh, everybody-to-feel-good, this is not for a feel-good contest, okay? This is about adhering to our own ordinances. And I think that if you make the decision to do that, then you'll uphold my appeal. If not, that, that's up to this body. But I'll again, one big glaring, uh, I'll just bring up the one glaring point, what is, uh, is from the, uh, the one subsection 152.031, initial zone C1, where, um, item 1 says, everything should conform to, see, the decision by the, the planning commission was all based on 152.058. It's cited in here. They didn't give consideration to, uh, 152.031, which I'm citing here, which it says right here in item 1, parking-related provisions of this section shall supersite C provisions of 152.058 of this chapter that are expressly contrary to this section. Okay? Well, the, moving down to item 3, all off-street paved vehicle areas along arterials of Highway 101, including surface lots, driveways, parking areas, and garages shall be accessed from alleys or a side or back street, and shall be located in areas located behind or to the side of a building. This building is, is perfectly designed to be able to do that, but not as this parking lot is designed. And then again, parking areas on the side of a building shall be limited to one row of diagonal parking maximum. Parking lot is on the side of the building, there should only be one row of diagonal, uh, parking places. And, and this is a corner lot, I, uh, moving down to item 3 from the subsection that I'm quoting here, uh, 153.031. On corner lots, I have garage, and this is a corner lot. Garage entrances and driveways shall be oriented to a side street such as from, away from Highway 101, when vehicle access cannot be provided from and out. So that's saying that, really, the configuration that's there now is okay, but not if you start directing traffic from 101 to park there. And again, there's, there's a process to grant bearings. There's a process that, and, and I'm not prepared to do that, that would be up to you, you know, or the, the council as a whole to, to make accommodations for this one, uh, application. But that, that's what, not what I'm here to do. And I, I do hope that, uh, this is resolved. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Grant?
Yes. So you filed an appeal on October 4th, and there were, you didn't raise any of the issues that you're now citing. So how can this, how can you come to an appeal here and you have all this new information?
Well, I think.
And that is a handicap space, by the way, on the plan, but this, you said that there wasn't enough spaces to meet the change of use of the building. That was your appeal point. I didn't hear any of the other, of the zoning requirements that you're saying now apply.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a question.
Well, I, 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 and I will answer the question with the preamble. The last, the previous appeal that I saw to this of a, of a planning commission was by you. That had no reason for appeal, detail.
I'm sorry, this is, I'm asking you a question about.
And, and in this case, I would say that my, uh, my description of the, uh, uh, that the parking lot is inadequate to meet the, the needs, or, you know, it, it covers that in its entirety. And at the time, I didn't have access to all of the, uh, the zoning ordinances. And upon further, uh, uh, research, uh, I do. And this, and this office within, the one, uh, question of my appeal. And then I said.
Sure. But the, um, zoning ordinance that was cited in your planning commission here, you know, the same ordinances that we're depending on now, you have, I mean, most ordinances are exactly the same. I just don't understand why you didn't have access to them. And same thing with the transportation system plan, that's been on our books for a long time. It is, it's, it has been available to you, so I don't understand. I mean, I really am trying to understand how now, for the first time, we hear that you're raising these issues.
These issues, the, uh, I, I, I had an idea that these issues were appealable. I was, I was asked to give a reason for my appeal, I did. And upon further research of, on, on the broad reasons for my appeal, these, uh, these ordinances existed. And, and they're not to be ignored. You can, you can ignore everything that I say, but the appeal is based upon our own laws here, our own regulations. And, and you can, you, you can turn me down all you want, but it doesn't change this. You have to change this.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give the opponents time to rebut as well? And answer any.
No, no, we.
Yeah, just to answer questions.
Yes, okay. Any questions?
Anyone have a question?
There is no additional rebuttal?
No, there isn't. Okay.
No, just if there were questions.
No, we're not. All righty. So at this time, um, has everyone had an opportunity to speak that wants to speak?
Yes, there's already been, we thought that was it.
Yeah.
So now.
Okay, yeah. Are there any requests to hold the record open at this time?
I'm going to have to make that request, I think, based on the new things you brought up. I think I have to, I would like to ask for seven days to address.
It's been requested to leave the record open for seven days to receive additional evidence. And it would be followed by additional seven days for response, and then another seven days for rebuttal.
So at this time, uh, will we put the hearing open upon the request of the opponents? Wired at this time? Do we need a motion?
Right.
And would you, if you're going to continue the hearing, you would continue to a date certain, which would be December 6th? So you want to include that in the motion?
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to keep the hearing open until December 6th?
Before we talk about that motion, can we hear from the planner on some of the points that were brought up?
No.
My decision as to whether to continue or not has a lot to do with if it can validate some of the, some of what was found out.
Excuse me, if anybody asks to keep the record open, it has to be kept open.
Okay.
So that it would probably come out at the time and.
I make a move to, um, keep it, um, keep it, no, to, um, to have this hearing continued, um, to December 6th.
Is there a second to the motion?
Also, yeah.
It's been moved in second to extend the hearing number.
They also need to motion to keep the record.
Right, and keep the record open.
Okay, whatever you're doing, but, um, keep the record open and, uh, as per the timelines and the, and our rules right now to, um, uh, continue the hearing to the December 6th meeting.
You can.
I do.
You're okay with the amendment?
Yes.
They still second it.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All righty, we will reconvene on December 6th at 7:00 AM. All righty, thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda then.
Sure.
There is no unfinished business under your new business, our, uh, so, so, Grant, maybe do you like to join us again?
Um, at your invitation, I sure will.
Has everyone had a chance to read the memo from Stan, the, uh, the commission chairman? She is saying, uh, request the placement of a trash can in a specific location and also a sign directing folks down to our hardware book line, uh, City Park Restaurant. Is there any discussion on the, um, on the, on the request? Yes.
I just received a little request.
Okay.
The garbage can was along the sidewalk, and was moved by the Parks Commissioner to another location, and then our janitor put it back where it was on the sidewalks so folks can use it. And they want it put back by the bushes and a concrete pad for it. It's just kind of been an empty spot. That was explained to them, that they, they want to have a concrete pad so it doesn't oppose a view or something, I don't know. But I, I'm just worried that people won't use it if they have to travel across to the bushes to put it.
It is very convenient, I, I like it.
I mean, it's on the sidewalk, like all the others, it's normal, so I just, you know, I just.
Does everyone know where the location is?
Yes.
It's been moved a couple times, we keep putting it back, and it gets moved again.
Right.
Yes, right. So, yeah, I, I, first of all, I don't see any sort of a concrete pad. And it should be by the sidewalk, and I could, I don't mind it being at the north end of the open space, but it shouldn't be halfway into the.
Into the.
Space, yeah. Especially now that it's raining, people don't want to get their feet here a bit more, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I like the location where it's suggested you have a sidewalk ahead. And whoever's moving, the family should decide who that is and speak to them. But the other request, I think, is reasonable, I would say, but very annoying.
Yeah, that sign was existing out there, it was blown down, well, early 2000s, mid-2000s, maybe. And it's been missing ever since. It just was never replied.
Do you think we could give a little bit bigger signing also?
Yeah, I mean, it, it actually said boat ramp, city park. It never, it never did say restaurants, it just had City Park with an arrow, and they're brown, um, with white letters, and then, then below it, it had a picture of a boat ramp, boat moving ramp, and it's a common state signage for highways.
Do we need to have an ODOT sign, or could we do our own?
We could do our own, but they usually do their own, um, signage. You have to request it, which has been done several times, and I told the Parks Commissioner that, so. It's just, um, you have to contact them and, I mean, they've been replacing the signs for street names a long time, they want to want, but other signage is just, it's hard to come by right now. I don't know if it's material or, but we could keep trying to get ahold of them and have them do it, and maybe there's an option, well, if we pay for it, I don't know what that cost would be, and then maybe, um, help expedite getting the sign put in.
Maybe we should do that, because we do have funds in the budget for the signage, so.
Yeah, okay.
Do you think that would be an option?
Yeah, I'll try to reach out to, uh, Dave Palchak, who's the sign coordinator for our, for ODOT, so.
Do you think there should be a limit on how much we could spend on a sign, so you.
I could maybe get a cost.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then maybe get it to council, if there's a big cost, if it's not too much, I'll just make the decision that if it's, you know, over a thousand dollars or something, I might bring it back to council. Because the post, we could, you know, get it, if we donate all the materials, uh, maybe coordinate with them, and then, uh, I don't ever recall us Public Works put, uh, for a city putting in ODOT signage. We have called that and removed stuff that has been damaged, and they pick it up, and then they're signing through it, but I'll, I'll try to contact them.
Okay, thank you. Should we authorize, just get a sign at, under a thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, I, I really don't mind that, but, you know, ODOT makes these signs, and right now is not a busy season. And we should just request that they do this, and our, our contribution could be in time that we will install those for them or something. I don't necessarily think that we need to expend money to get it done, but, you know, it could be patient.
Yeah, because we've never had to before, I don't think that's a common thing.
Okay, okay, no. And I like the idea that ODOT does it, because they have, like you say, the traditional, you know, boat ramp signs. They probably have a restroom sign, too, you know?
Yeah, I could request that.
The standard.
Integrated that, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Kind of a silly question, but is it a two-sided sign, so people can both sign on some check?
It's usually, uh, you can have, because it's on the other side of the highway, that we could request so there's the same thing on both sides. So if they're coming, it's even on the wrong side of the road, but they can still view it from that side. I believe it was that way before.
When did that sign blow down?
Oh, gosh, in the, around, probably 2008 or 2009, right in that time. Because we have it back here where the charity signs end up, and the state signs for them to pick up, and it's sat there for a long time. And then they kind of picked up some other stuff that we had, put in the items, went in, and those signs got hit. And then it came and got all the signage. But, yeah, we could probably, try to squeaky wheel.
Okay, we'll do the wheel time. Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Um, also before you is the purchase of a Skid steer grappler bucket. Do you want to, you might miss on.
Yeah, so that, so we're, um, we have a skid steer, and it's like a Swiss Army knife of machinery. Get different implements for the front, and we do budge it in every year for implements, but, but the, um, skid steers, like a tractor, and, I don't know, they're, they're a little smaller, compact, and we put forks on them, about different kinds of buckets. Grapple bucket grabs, and we'll put it in the dumpster when we break up the, um, uh, docks, it's easy to get in the dumpster. And then if you have the bucket, you have to handle stuff in, this thing have a thing that will grab material, put it in. Um, it's also going to help for brush, and we'll, we're going to use it for a lot of other stuff, but it's, it's just another piece of equipment that Public Works can definitely use in store sorting, in a shop with the other implements. We have a broom, we have a broom box for the skid steer, forks, there's just a, probably five implements now, just be added to the implements that we have for. Like I said, we, we did put in a, a, a budget for implements, I used to try to get one, at least something once. Like I said, we, we did put in a, a, a budget for implementation, so we tried to get one, at least something once every other year. So it's been a while since we've had anything.
Questions, Fran?
So, um, I'm forgetting our procurement policy, but this is over five thousand, do we need?
Need a motion, yeah.
No, um, do, do we need like three bids or not?
Um, well, it's kind of an ongoing, it's, it's kind of a niche item being, and we, and we do sole sourcing, there's sole sourcing on there. That already does that for governmental entities.
Or there's Peterson cap there, the ones that?
Yeah, Peterson cap and then they, they also, it's on there, it should be the sole sourcing, um, there's a discount, um,
Sourcewell.
Yeah, Sourcewell.
It's a government, it's a, through the government contract.
Yeah, but Sourcewell is the one that matches all the, the, um, criteria for goods and services.
But there'd be any ways I can provide this bucket, right, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because Peterson cap provides it, the Sourcewell is to the discount that we get to make it the lowest price because they compare.
Right.
So it's actually through Sourcewell recommends Peterson cap and that's how, that's how it kind of all starts.
Okay.
Because we're governmental.
Are there any other questions for Brady? Is there a, a motion to accept this quote to purchase a?
Stop over it. May.
It's been moved, is there a second to?
A second.
It's been moved in second to purchase the bucket, whatever, grappler or whatever thing. For five thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get your record.
Uh, we need a resolution of the City of Detroit adopting, um, social media. Cooperley, do you want to enlighten us this on this?
Sure. And I realize, based on some of the questions I've gotten, that I probably didn't provide a very detailed staff report. Um, but I just want to make sure that the council understands the reasoning of what the purpose is. And it's merely just to communicate, it's not to engage in discussions or it's, uh, not to, uh, uh, open an invitation for discussions, it's simply to give us another source so we can communicate with our residents and be transparent about what we're doing. Um, right now, there's a Facebook page called the Friends and Family of Detroit. Anyway, um, they provide information about our meetings and stuff like that. This would just be a Facebook page, for example, throughout the city so that we can provide information about what's going on in the city. The meetings, if there's any road closures due to some kind of, um, break, which we hope there's no water lines or a break, if there is those closures. Um, the only time we might engage is if we need to clarify something, like for example, if I post something and a customer says, now where is this again? Then I might go back on and say, hey, just to clarify, it's here. Um, I will probably be the primary person posting to this. And again, the information is to say, here's your information, if you want more, go to the city's website before we'll post more detailed information or contact City Hall. Um, that's the best way to disseminate information is for them to, if they really don't understand what goes in, contact City Hall. But otherwise, it just push, it's just an avenue for us to push the information out.
I think to start the, um, discussion by saying that I personally do not Twitter, whatever you do.
We're not, we're not Twitter.
I don't Twitter, you know, I don't do Facebook, I do not do any social media. Um, I did read through this policy though, and I have to tell you the story of the city of Detroit where their emergency operations plan burned up with their city hall.
You made the city of Detroit in Oregon?
Yeah, Detroit, yeah, sorry. Um, and so the mayor shared his story of how, um, he was able through face, Facebook to talk to all the citizens and people were able to find out where everybody was. They were able to find resources and they were able to let people knew, let them know what they needed. And so I think it is a valuable resource and that, um, enlightenment to have something like that available in the type of an emergency like that, um, yeah, that's my feelings, all been the discussion.
I'm, I'm a big social media fan and I don't want all of them, but, uh, and there's actually two Kibbe, uh, Deepa Bay community groups. Um, and I'm a member of those in New Ford and also Lincoln City. And I learned a lot that I wouldn't have known about what's going on in those communities as well. Um, it can be infused, of course, like anything else, but if, um, we have an administrator, um, that can look at it daily or an hour often think that you should, I think this would be a valuable tool for us.
Yes, yeah, I was just gonna add, when I went to the, um, LOC conference, I went to, um, uh, summoned four or five different mayors, but when all of them had some sort of, um, social media page or an app, city app so they could give the information to the people. And they said it's really effective and really helpful and I think just as long as you're not engaging with anybody at all, it'll probably be just fine. Do you want me to?
Oh, it's so, our, um, we, we, uh, really need you to be the one, and you could designate an alternate, Doc, to respond. Um, are, are we going to allow peer-to-peer conversations?
No.
Okay. Alright.
Uh, if anybody, if I have a backup, it would be Carla.
Because somebody, somebody could go log in on Facebook and they could, well, brands does, does anybody go this, that, and the other thing? And then somebody happens to be looking at the page at that time and said, yeah, I do, blah, 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 are you, will we allow that kind of conversation?
Oh, oh, okay, so.
That's peer-to-peer.
Right, 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 I'm following you. Um, we can choose not to allow that or we can let it go, we can open up comments or close comments. There are times when, in previous cities where if you had an issue you knew was going to be slightly contrary, you might not open comments and simply say, contact City Hall if you have any questions or have any concerns. Are there going to be times where people will comment with each other? Sure. Um, but the social media policy would say that the city can dictate when they would close that down. As long as the city doesn't engage, I mean, if you can have the same thing, as long as they're not violating any policy harassment, you know, that sort of stuff. Then we can let the comments go, otherwise we are, the policy allows us to say, sorry, you're violating this, we're gonna close your, your ladies' comment, we'll, we'll close the comments. Um, it really just depends on how we present our information. Uh, if we say the roads being closed or the meetings being open or the front having open house or whatever we share. It's really about how we're going to present it and whether or not we say it's open for discussion here. That's not gonna be the message, the message is going to be, if you want yourself to be heard, contact City Hall. But I won't be able to stop unless they violate our rules, somebody from the peer-to-peer, won't be able to stop that. If you, if two people want to get on and discuss something, as long as they're not violating anything, it's freedom of speech. I mean, there's situations that, um, I see all the time that you'll post like an event and someone will attack you because something was spelled wrong. And then someone else will attack them for attacking you. Oh, sure, oh, sure, um, and it'll have nothing to do with, yeah. Yeah, and that, in that point, we shut it down and it starts to become a violation. Go ahead.
And see, did you?
Yeah, I, um, like the idea of having a social media presence. I think that, um, there is no reason to have comments at all. If we're talking about this as a way to push information out, no comments and we have a lot of that.
Just, uh, that says more information.
There we go.
We can totally do that. Yes, Fran?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that. I have a part of what you were talking about today. I, I wrote, um, I have some, um, small edits, but I didn't want to, um, I wrote them up just so you could look at them, so I don't, you know what I'm talking about. They're just, um, very minor, but I'll talk to you about it in a minute. So, um, when I was reading through, uh, the word agent is used a number of times and I'm not sure that's the correct definition. Um, but if, if, we need to define agent.
Okay.
So if that's what we mean, staff or contractor acting in official capacity for the city. And I didn't think it meant city council. Right, it just meant a staff person or a contractor.
It's generally only gonna be a staff person, but to our place, I mean, if the city council wanted to participate in this, you could, that's your decision. But otherwise, it would just be a means and method for staff to share information. I would even say contractors, so we can simply change agent to staff.
I think we could do that, that'd be clearer.
Yeah.
And then if the city council wants anything posted, the city council as a whole would ask for it to be posted.
Correct.
Okay, that would make it cleaner.
Okay.
And then on the next page, um, so I think, you know, if people, well, if we don't have any comments, then this, that changes. But if, um, if we don't go in that direction, I mean, this is what this was for. Um, because if you're in a land use situation, um, people need to know that you can't just comment on the, on the Facebook or whatever, social media and have it be counted, so, so that was what this is. I, I separated it out and just run together as one sentence, so I separated it into two, one was related to land use.
Okay.
Be considered formal public comments, these must be submitted to the city planner, give the email and time of the matter referencing the land use matter. And then similarly, comments are not considered formal public comments in relation, um, to any other matter and the form of city review. So if somebody wanted to comment on, I don't know, uh, parks or the harbor or anything else, these comments must be filed before 4:00 PM of the day of the city council meeting by submission to you. People don't think they've given us comments and then aren't heard. So those were the, um, those are the two suggestions, if we're gonna open it to public comment, and I'm not sure we want to either.
I do have a point to make about that. I don't think we should have comments, but I think what's gonna happen is we post something on behalf of the city. Friends of Detroit, somebody's gonna reshare it to that group and then put a certain comment name on there. So there will be comments, but it won't be on our.
Andrew will be responding to those.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
And then I think what she's saying is a disclaimer that please, this is not public comment, this is, yeah, you know, just make that very clear. Yeah.
I've already heard from the administrator of the Friends and Valerie, I've already heard from her. She loved the idea and said she's happy to continue to post, she already posts her meetings. But I'm a member of the group that I would post as the city simply passing on misinformation or she would continue to pass. But that's all it would be, there's no, I, I, there's no commenting, the extent of comments that I've seen and, and they could be, so, so, Council Rec's ideas are great and I can, having that specified there. But if you don't want any comments, that kind of eliminates all of this. So I would say that at this point, I would go back to the drawing board, if you will, and just create the policy saying, no comments, just, you know, to clarify what we're gonna do, if that's the council wishes to say, which is no comments, period.
Yeah, and if, if you'd like to, um, bring something to the attention of the city, um, please email me, of course.
Right, okay, alright, so I'll go, I'll go back to the drawing board and come back to something that basically says no comments and clarifies kind of what Council Rec would look at, we'd some good evidence on that.
I'd love to hear. Will there be a share button? Because I know that I've seen groups, they can either have the share button or not.
I, I would like to keep a share button because I want the information to be disseminated. So if somebody's on, like, pe- people will follow in like Facebook that are city page. And if they want to share that with their people, because maybe they know they have a lot of residents who are interested, I would like to be able to continue doing that.
Okay. So we'll hold on to the resolution, okay? I got this, okay, thank you. Alrighty. Let's see, ordinance number 333-22. An ordinance amending. Ordinance number 332. Uh, okay, so.
Ordinance 333-22 amending 332-22.
Okay. I, I got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I ended this hurry, my apologies, there was a lot of threes in there.
I know, okay, okay. So, okay, so we actually have, uh, more folks wanting to join our emergency preparedness committee. So we would change the, uh, terminology from three, uh, folks, um, to five. And we'd also change their limits then of five years served on the committee, so.
I'd just a comment on this, uh, on the components of this, this committee. Is, I'd like to see, um, if we're gonna have five, I'd reduce the maximum council membership of the committee to two. And then the three citizens that are.
Right. Well, that's all that's on it now is to.
I, would, but would it be allowable for three?
No, no.
Okay, very good.
Now, it's only two, two council and the rest would be the presidents.
That's great, that, that was very, very easy, thank you.
Alright. So is there a motion to accept, uh, the amended ordinance 333-22 to?
I'm not saying anything.
Okay.
I, I, I would be happy to, um, uh, make a motion to approve number 333-22 to amend the ordinance, um, to increase the maximum leadership.
Alright, thank you. This is your second to the motion. I'll say it as well.
Okay, thank you, Fran. Um, it's been moved in second to increase the size of the emergency preparedness committee to five members. Um, any discussion on the motion, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, thank you, we'll get that going, going in, we'll get some more members signed up here, that would be fun. We have a proclamation from the Lincoln County School District who is 100 years old. I'll go ahead and read that for us here. Uh, pro- proclamation declaring the year 2021 as a 100th year celebration of the creation of the Lincoln County School District. Whereas the first school in Lincoln County was in Eddyville in nineteen, in 1866 with the first teacher being named Elizabeth Ann Porter. And whereas in 1923, more than 78 traditional schools were consolidated into one Lincoln County School District. And whereas in 2023, Lincoln County School District is now celebrating its 104th centennial birthday. And whereas the Lincoln County School District has provided outstanding educational opportunities to the students and support for as many diverse families and communities for 100 years. And whereas we now take this opportunity to proclaim to all people for 2023 as the centennial year of the Lincoln County School District with pride and honor. At the same time honoring the land we now inhabit and have a belonging to the Confederated Tribes of the Smits Indians. Now therefore, we have resolved that the residents of Lincoln County and more smaller notably, the children and families of the Lincoln County School District honor the role of all educators and support staff and the education of our students. We affirm the opportunity for students and adults in the county to learn about and commemorate the efforts of the Lincoln County School District as 100th year of operation. We affirm our desire to continue to strengthen democratic participation and to inspire our future generations to cherish and pres- preserve the historic precedents established. And finally, recognize the Lincoln County School District for its dedication and commitment to excellence in education for many, many years to come. The city council, the city of Detroit, proclaims 2023 the year of centennial for the Lincoln County School District and wish to celebrate with everyone everywhere in Lincoln County. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as written to the record?
Amen.
I guess that's a motion that's okay.
Yes.
Is there a second to the amen?
A second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved to second to accept this proclamation and to proclaim 2023, uh, 100th year celebration for Lincoln County School District. Is there any discussion? twenty twenty-three, uh, one-hundredth year celebration for Lincoln County School District. Is there any discussion of the motion? I guess no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright, we go here, almost, almost, we're almost there, Jen. December twentieth, twenty-two city council meeting, I would like to, um, not hold that meeting. If that's possible, that way you can just do the one meeting on December sixth or December, allowing people to travel and be with their families that week. Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, where are we, we're, we're gonna abstain from holding a meeting on the twenty-seventh, twentieth of December. Is there a motion for that?
Oh, you, you.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to not hold a meeting on this December twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any discussion on the motion, you four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, you have a letter, a letter of resignation. She was, I guess, working her butt out, it sounds like, so, um, anyway, we need a motion to accept her resignation from her planning permission. To reclaim the position, or is that a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll send it.
It's been moved in second to accept she was letter of resignation dated October twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving along here, correspondence, no correspondence. Letters of, okay, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees. Yes. I'm wondering if for future agendas, or maybe starting next year, we could move that by a little earlier in the agenda.
Yes.
Um, we've been talking about that, it's in our rules that's placed here. Are actually our rules that we're gonna go by, so our new city recorder adjusted our agendas to have our, so we'll have to adjust our rules.
We have to adjust our rules. I'll bring that to the next meeting to make that change, so they don't have to sit right all the way in.
So, um, it has a, like, in January or whenever we get that done.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna work on that right away.
Okay, emergency preparedness.
Um, our next meeting is December the sixth, and we decided to hold our meetings an hour before our regularly stated meeting, and that way it'd be just easier, you know, for everybody, since we already have that day pinned for meetings. Uh, we have, of course, we have the new person that's joined us, and I'm in here from another person with really good experience that has bizarre to join our committee. And so that's really good news.
Wonderful, that's awesome. Did you have anything else?
Would, could I have a question, um?
Yes.
So sometimes we have special meetings.
Yes.
At an hour, half an hour of executive sessions. Um, so will it lead an hour before the schedule, of course, it's gonna be like six o'clock, are we gonna say meet an hour before the city council meetings? I, I think that we can be flexible with that.
Yes.
I think it just depends.
So on case by case.
So, I think so, yeah.
We'll just get that done, my, my special meetings. Any questions for the? Um, come on up, Jen, let's do our harbor restoration.
You say, you say.
Or a kid, I'm sorry.
We had a discussion this afternoon, we're in. Around the very issue.
Yes.
Unprepared, but in the meantime, I'll come to you.
Well, thank you, I'm not second about this for us.
I got him all flustered by making him wait.
Yeah. That'll save him out there. Okay, this afternoon, the harbor restoration steering committee met, and we had on the phone, uh, PND, PND, I designed an engineering company, and Eric Campbell from Campbell Environmental, who does the permitting for PND, who all the permitting for our harbor replacement of docks, two, three, and four. Um, one of the big problems with which we have been dealing is this mitigation issue that the National Marine Fishery Service has requested or required. We got some clarification today from Eric Campbell. That the removal of the check dam is not the goal of National Marine Fishery Service, what they want us to do is a study which answers three questions. And I'll give you two of them if I can remember the two. If the check dam were removed, is there enough flow from the South Depot Bay Creek to clear out enough silt from the harbor to allow harbor dredging to keep on a similar schedule to the existing schedule? And would the normal tidal ebb and flow plus the flow from South Depot Bay Creek be sufficient to keep the silt from building up in the harbor? The name was a third one, can you remember that?
I don't, I.
They would say, they sent us an email, and city may already have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It also involves hydrology.
Yeah.
After the removal, potential removal of the check dam.
Yeah. Anyhow, um, they just asked us to do a study on the feasibility of a study on the hydrology and hydraulics of the waterfalls. The removal of the check dam is not an issue. Uh, we are opposed to it as a city, uh, car engineers.
Oh, I remember, uh, it was if it would negatively impact the stakeholders in depot bay if the check dam was from the height of the, of the bay itself.
Yeah. Okay. So, but, and this, this, then this study would be on file at National Marine Fishery Service. And, and it removed, the check dam removal for any further projects, mitigation as a mitigation, which for any further products that the city projects that the city would. So that's a big difference. I mean, it's, it's a real clarification. It's taken us a lot of long time to get to this point, and I don't know why, but.
I, I don't know, I, that way, your own.
I don't care.
Jack is okay. They'd really want us to do this project, to be successful, and, and this is, this is their way of, of letting us go forward.
Yeah, um, and having said that, um, according to Mr. Campbell, the National Marine Fishery Service wants us to commit, wants the city to, to commit to do this study upfront. The city can commit to doing this study and have up to five years to complete this study. So, the whole purpose, and, and PND and Campbell Engineering, like, like, you said, they have come up with this, have found this, that it's acceptable to National Marine Fish, so we can get this project done. And, uh, anyhow, uh, what we will be doing is having the mayor send an email to, uh, PND Engineering, uh, committing to doing this study. PND's, uh, hydrologist will gather information needed to answer the questions with input from the city and forward to Campbell Environmental, who will send that on to National Marine Fishery Service. The study can be paid for over a number of budget cycles, and our grants may be sought. And we don't have, currently, we don't know how much this study will cost. PND, the engineers will work on that, and they have a week to get back to us.
Can I enter here too, just, just, depending, it, it, it could be, you know, expensive, but because we have five years, we can probably amateurize the, the cost of it over a five-year period of time through budget cycle, different budget cycles.
And the National Marine Fishery Service, according to Mr. Campbell, that permit approval does not require a study be completed prior to moving on with the bidding and construction. And, uh, Mr. Campbell also made it very clear that due to staffing shortages, shortages across all agencies, permitting agencies, there's four to nine-month permitting approval time. Uh, cause we're dealing with National Marine Fisheries, Corps of Engineers, U N A, their O D M W. Anyhow, so we got an awful lot done that way, that the, uh, bidding process, the, the, uh, bid package should be in the city's hands within a couple of weeks, if best of the, we got the information today. And then we can go up to bid. And, uh, and then when the bids come back, PND Engineering will help us review reviews and comment on them. So it's a very, actually, it was a very short meeting, unlike some other meetings I've attended recently. Um, and, uh, we got, we got an awful lot. But then again, we have two, we only have two agendas. Anybody have any questions? Anyway, and so Fran, you know, we'll keep all that, what the perky've done, just we'll, we'll go throw away, because, you know, hopefully this will all work out.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jen. Any other questions with Jen? If you'd like to do a paper as well?
Oh, yes, there was a harbor meeting, we did have a question, we did have a board, so we have nothing to do.
Okay.
Listen, be back soon.
Uh, well, it's, that wasn't the problem.
Oh, okay. Um, anyone from parks? Anyone from parks? planning? Come on up, Judy. Are you still awake back there too? Okay, kiddo.
Yes.
Well, thanks for the reminder.
You did a big signing meeting, thank you. Um, I wanted to let you know that at our last meeting, we approved uh, phase one of what's known as the Cedar Hills subdivision. Uh, the phase one will consist of, uh, four lots, or seven, sorry, seven lots along the four hundred block of Winchell. Um, and then there is one remaining parcel that will constitute phase two, and that's roughly four and a half acres. And that will be, uh, what shall we say, where the interesting part of the subdivision will occur, because that involves the creek and the Mariparian, the animals, and all of that, so. And at this point, we have no idea, or at least the applicant had no idea that the phase two would be presented to the planning permission that we gave approval to proceed with the seven lots along Winchell. Um, at our meeting next week, we will be having a hearing on the townhouse ordinance.
Awesome.
That will be the primary business, uh, for next week. The notices have gone out to, uh, all residents. And you are all welcome to attend, you'll find it just as exciting as tonight's meeting. Uh, and hopefully get short one, uh, because the only other thing right now on the agenda is that we want to, uh, take the opportunity to discuss what our training needs might be for, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, wonderful, good.
Other questions?
Any questions for Judy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. And anyway, from salmon enhancement this evening, there's a lot, like, there are a lot of there, you know? No, no salmon people here today, okay. City staff request, did we want to go into the, just do kits real quick? Um, this king tides, um, video, I can see that, those are really not good, right, yeah, okay, okay. Okay, okay, well, we've got king tides predicted, so.
Signage.
Yeah, two of them.
Yeah, we'll put one on the launch side, and we'll put one on the dock side, or box one, two, three, four, and.
Okay, okay. Good, that was a good information. Any questions? So it's gonna be just, um, installed in the winter months, if they can await? Or they still?
No, so there'll be a gear round, we'll have it in, like, the other, uh, information sites down there. There's one for tsunami, we'll try to keep them in the same area.
Can't wait to see my first king tide.
Oh, that is, oh, that's good.
It's, they're fine, yeah.
Um, who wants to start? Kimmer?
I'll air, will you go?
You always like to go first.
Okay.
I don't mind.
So the guys flushed the lines, we had a, a structure fire in Morocco Saturday, and, and the guys, um, communicated with fire department, they used about fifty thousand gallons of water. Um, we, we had to go through to flush the hydrants and valves in Morocco area. Um, and then, uh, we made sure that the house that burned down, the meter was isolated, so I did call out the on-call operator to take care of that.
Was that the coochie's house?
Yes, it was.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, it was unfortunate, but nobody got hurt, they got out. We just wanted to make sure that we were there to help the quality of the water, because it was disturbed quite a bit. Um, the Evoca was here, they're the company, um, through the US Filter, that, um, they're waiting on their test to work on the clarifier, the secondary plant at the wastewater. Um, they got it up and running, they rebuilt it, the guy was here for four days, and, uh, rebuilt the center of the centrifuge, so it's up and running, and the odor problem just almost disappeared overnight, so it wasn't that bad, but the guys were really struggling to help get the odor down, and once, once the plant was running, it correctly, it, it was great. So it's running well, and there's some warranty on there, and uh, we should, you know, get another twenty-five years out of it, hopefully. Um, so, onto, I'm trying to be quick here, because it's been a long one, uh, distribution crew's been reading water meters, um, the crew, uh, replaced the little old code sewer pump, when it went down, we haven't done a C D, we had a backup sewer pump that the council let me get. We put that in, the old pump now goes into shop and get repaired. Um, they will drive it up there, it's into Walts, and we'll stop and also be shipping. Um, the, uh, radio crew, the Oregon shakeout happened Saturday, and Michael Brain and Eric Williams, a couple of the other guys were, uh, involved in that, it went really well. They, um, they used the, uh, they got a new laptop to put, uh, Winklink on, which is a radio version for, uh, communicating with, uh, through satellites, or, uh, to save them into Lincoln County Emergency. So we did really well, it's gonna have a report for me, and I'll keep that file, but they keep a logbook in there. So it worked really well, and, and all, this is, we had, I, I did order them a wifi extender, um, to, to help with their, uh, with the new laptop. And that's just something that goes on the side con and RV has. Um, one issue I'm having is Charter Cable is, um, a cable company that was approved a, a few years ago, before the pandemic, to, um, have a, uh, franchise agreement with the city, and we're, we're doing a little, uh, work on that, but their, my biggest fear is when they go through and bore, because I wasn't understanding it was gonna be aerial, because I was part of their decision. Oh, yeah, well, they're really aerial, except for the little old code, and so, but they're gonna do all underground boring, and they're gonna bore through the entire neighborhoods of depot bay. And my fear is, the last time we had boring done, uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, um, for fiber optics, it cost the city tens of thousands of dollars in, in water main repairs. It's hard to locate water mains without wires on them, our, our mains are kind of old. When they were put in, in the early seventies, sixties, seventies, our, our water mains are all over the board in age. And about eighty percent of them do not have located wire on them, so when we do locate, and we try to line up valves, we look at, uh, asphalt in maps, but it's really hard to decipher exactly where the water mains are unless we dig in, so my fear is that we don't have enough repair parts in stock, that, and they're just doing this last minute, so I'm gonna talk to, I talked to their foreman today. Um, Kim and I have been doing a little bit of research on exactly, um, if there is a, what was it, a?
There doesn't appear, or at least we have a name of fine and ordinance that firmly, that completely addresses, it was approved, there was a franchise agreement approved in two thousand and twenty-one through the council, but there doesn't seem to be the next piece of the ordinance which actually puts it into place. So I asked our city attorney what he knew about this, and he's gonna get back to me in a day or so. I couldn't find anything anymore, except that there were some concerns about some of the language, I did find something from council rec about some concerns with the language, but it does appear that something was approved by the council, we just don't have our.
Okay.
Just questions?
Um, we. We, right now, we have our legacy franchise agreement with now made, now.
A stamp.
Coastcom or state?
No, they've been succeeded by.
Oh, a stamp.
A stamp, yes. But we also, also currently have another, that they have an exercise with spectrum, was it?
Yeah, that's Charter.
That's Charter.
That's Charter now.
Yeah, that's Charter.
Okay. It's just, I have had citizens, you know, want a, an alternative to what or a stamp now. So, if there's some way that, you know, might be palatable to get a competitor in here, I think it would be, it would be good for our citizens.
Yeah.
If they have to go above ground.
My worry is blowing up Deepwater Bay and they're gonna have, they're gonna bore through every neighborhood and run everything underground, which really worries me.
We did discuss a bond.
Right.
Asking them for some kind of bond so that they would repair.
Yeah. And repair material, we're gonna have to, if we could wait till like the budget, that we could budget in. And you can't get piped now, it's just, it's literally impossible. So, we have quite a bit in stock for emergency stuff, but maybe 100 feet of one size and maybe 80 feet of another size that, you know, we can borrow from other cities, but if the, if stuff gets hit on a regular basis, we're gonna be, you know, in a world of hurt.
I was at a friend's house the other morning and it was, their internet went down, it was spectrum. And he called, you know, 800 number and the whole area was down due to a problem with the fiber optic line and they couldn't give any estimate and wanted to come back down.
So, this, I think, Mary, it's a longer conversation than I'm sure any of us have patience for now, but I'm very supportive in general of putting loans underground, including power, I would be very resilient. So, I'd like to find a way to encourage that to happen. And I was just at a meeting today and I'm writing a note or something where there's a lot of money right now that are loan money and we've all in loan funds for both, you know, water and wastewater, but also other infrastructure. And those loans can be turned, or half of them can be forgiven as grants and sometimes all of them. So, there might be some opportunities to upgrade things, put wires in our water, that would be part of the water system upgrade. So, anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe we can talk about it on another agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna discuss some information and then I'll get to the next council meeting.
Okay. But we've stopped the underground.
Well, so much stock it to come up with more information for the grading first and then second, get a plan of when and where they're gonna bore and really be on top of everything. So maybe they can do the preliminary locates where they vacuum down, find the, find the utility to then bore, once they know where everything is. Because a lot of times we'll just call for locates and just start boring. You know, they're doing it on a Friday, they're doing it on a Saturday, you know, when none is here. We're just a small hometown with older infrastructure pipes and it's just, it's tough.
Yeah, not good.
If stuff gets broken.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for me? You probably, thank you for this update on our project memo. That was very helpful. One, thank you, how we're at.
So, unless you want me to go over, I do want to go over one, a couple of things. So, Gray's been talking about the water meters and we used the new system for the first time to do the billing. So the billing's had some delays and probably initially haven't received the bill yet. There's been several reasons for that, but your bill is coming, so. And part of it was learning that, the folks learning that how to use the new system, but they seem to like it so far, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They really, so it's just growing things on that. And so, there isn't any additional update on the audit with the exception of that I did find out, I'm seeking out other sources to do the piece of it. Right now, Cody with ISOP says he doesn't need anything else. So, we're just, we're still working on that and I'll just continue to update you on that. The salary study, I did, want to expand upon this just a little bit. It is going to be an IGA, so I didn't bring it to actually get presented, but we can present it at the next meeting. I did, I've been trying to get quotes, but that's pretty difficult, but since it's an interregional agreement, we actually didn't need to get quotes, so I would, if you want to proceed, I will get something on the agenda next time so that you could, if you want to proceed with them. I can continue to go out and see if I can find other ones, but if you, you know, feedback on the quote would be good. We don't want to do a motion or anything tonight. Then you keep back on the quote, how you're feeling about that would be appreciated.
Do we just get a, do we just join the, Council of Governments?
That's, that's a different one. That's a different one.
But they don't offer the same service?
They do not. They did, used to be a part of it, but now it's under the Lady Council of Governments. So, you can see the difference is about 1,500, almost 1,600 if we're a member, which means, you know, a member getting their benefits. If you want to know what those are, I can, I can tell you what I do with those up, but with their HR, you would have support if you needed any HR issues as being a member. You know, that would be just additional support that way. The supplemental budget, I wanted, I actually have draft resolution presented for you, but then I started working on. I found some other things that if you uncover that doesn't appear that these came over the way they should have into the budget, so we have to add those, include those in the supplemental. And it also looks like I'm gonna have to do one for the urban renewal budget. So, these are just things that just didn't transfer over and to make sure they do that. And maybe Oregon, I'm, we're gonna have to change something in the employee handbook, so I'll bring that back to you for the next one. And then let you decide on that. The only other extra thing I have is that the Small Cities Network meeting is next on Wednesday, November 16th. And it's all the League of Oregon Cities Council, everyone's put it on. You're welcome to attend if you're interested and I can state this information. And that reminds me, are you all getting League of Oregon City notices? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll check to make sure that you are a member because we have to fill out a census every year that everybody here is a member, so I'll make sure that, so there's no point in me forwarding these notices to you because you're already getting them. I'll knock that out of there.
Oh, that's okay.
You don't want these notices?
I'll take up, but it's just like that, you know, 90 emails and 150 emails a day.
It's probably coming to your council, not your other.
Yeah, I need to lock into that.
So you probably have all these things to do.
Great.
But then I won't worry, Farlan, I won't worry about whether or not you guys get these because you're already getting them. So, I don't have anything additional to add.
Any questions for Kimberly?
Have question. When the, Grant, whether it was here, we gave her a whole lot of stuff to work on. Is there any clues to when she might be able to get it back to us?
They're, they're gonna get back to me next week. We're gonna have every other, we're gonna have a meeting every other week. So the idea is to take everything that they got and then Rachel was dead, so that's why she wasn't with us that day. So they're gonna put her to the end and then we'll get back, just not we'll update you at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kim for that? Okay. We need to do a special meeting on the 6th, starting at 6:30. Counselor Kim would like to get updates on our 50th celebration coming up in May, so if that's okay, we'll stick.
So if we're having emergency, Karen, can you do that at 6:00 and maybe do this at 6:00, 7:00?
Okay.
Would that work?
Sure.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So, council comments? I have one. All right. Adoptive Jordan, Jen Jordan about music. Jordan's gonna have a hand surgery and he thinks, I gave him the date, May 20th, but he, he thinks he'll be healed by then, but he's not absolutely positive. But Michael Dane, I will contact him because Jordan is not opposed to them playing together. He says they've done that before.
Oh, yeah.
And so, we'll have music.
Okay, we got music.
Okay. Counselor Gray?
No.
Nothing? Okay.
Just regarding the 50th anniversary, I've done a lot of research. I'll be happy to tell you guys about it, but look into several different things that we haven't even discussed unless we include it forward. That will be fun. Thank you.
Yeah, so I went to a drinking water providers today, put on the EPA, DEQ, World Communities, something, something. It related to a lot of things, but a lot of it was about grant sources for infrastructure and watershed protection in the cities of Lincoln City, Toledo, Newport. I didn't say I represented Deepwater Bay, but people who are from Deepwater Bay who are there, a lot of land trust, a lot of funding agencies. So, I will try to provide the information to Gray to see if any of this would help our infrastructure, so that would be another grant source and then Rachel can have that information as well.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. I was gonna go through that, but then I had to go back, so. That was good. I don't know.
Nothing tonight?
I just wanted to check in with Pretty about the location of a cache up on the hills of Deepwater Bay.
Still working, they're, they're working on the pump, not the pump station, on the tank, or doing a water tank up above, but they're gonna have a meeting and I'm gonna go on with a computer, like a webinar, and they're gonna talk about the pump stations and input of the engineers. So I have some concern with the tank locations here that they want to put up there, the big storage water tank. Yeah, for the height of it, worried about that because it would affect our other tank levels and tanks, so. Yeah, but we're discussing now, I'll bring that up to them when we talk about the pump station down in the lower part. That was a staging area that the county identified, so for tsunami evacuation. It was certain height up the hill and that's about where the pump station is gonna be, so it worked out. But yeah, I'll, I'll let you know, hopefully by next weekend, it's supposed to be.
And I just, the witches were out yesterday collecting food and money for the food bank and it was a lot of fun in that way and.
Wasn't there a hot dog there?
Yeah, there was a hot dog.
Yeah, I was gonna say, her husband was dressed up as a hot dog. Yeah, it's pretty cute.
Yeah. And.
Was it successful?
It was not, you know, it was not, not as public intended. It was so well, I think the weather was so much, there was not as many folks upstairs, but our residents were.
Residents were great, yeah. It was, it was.
Yeah, so we, I really appreciate all the support, especially Jack, who's a big help also. Okay, thank you, we're done. It's good. I have the, a chest, sorry.
Chest, yeah.
All right, chest.
I missed the ball.
Thank you.
I could watch for you. But I thought, oh, I can watch, yeah, what you have to do is.